Hello, I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to acknowledgements and administrative comments. Subject A, Walter B. Howard update, Josh Noble presenting.
Hello, everyone. Our fourth grade students completed the science state test on Monday. Over the next couple of years, we will be making a shift in science as the next gen science standards are implemented. What I learned this year is there's a major shift in the area of application. Students will no longer just be assessed on general science knowledge. Under the new assessments and standards, students will need to take their science knowledge and apply it to the scientific world. So that's kind of a big shift compared to the last 10 years or so. We are currently working through our meeting the needs meetings in preparation for next year. This is a meeting where a number of teachers meet to discuss each student with a goal of ensuring we are providing our students with the best possible support in the next school year. The end of the school year also will have several activities. Monday will be our last Tiger Jam. The theme will be Flag Day and will focus on resilience. This also coincides with the Dress and Red, White, and Blue Day. The sixth grade student council is planning for a dress up day or days with a theme of decades. They're still working through that plan. PTA has been approved to have an outdoor movie night at WBH, and that is planned for Friday, June 18th. We will need to cap that event at 200 people. Field day is scheduled for Monday, June 21st, assuming the weather is cooperative. I know that Mr. Hesley and Mr. Christiansen have put together a great plan up for the event. In order to stay under 200 people, we will not be inviting family members this year, which is unfortunate. And last but not least, we will be having an outdoor sixth grade graduation on Thursday, June 24th. Each student will be allowed to invite up to four family members to the ceremony. Again, also in an effort to stay under that number of 200 people. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Just to give you guys a Regents update, we have two students who are testing and there'll be three tests given total. Everyone else has chosen to take the exemption that we talked about in previous board meetings. So that's where we stand right now with that. We're going to close the year off during that Regents week on June 24th with a half day field day where we've got a bunch of events planned for the kids. We're going to start the day with Patty Metzler and company making a grand breakfast for the kids and they'll eat that in their first period rooms. And then afterwards, we'll go outside and we'll participate in a ton of different activities to really celebrate what's been a tough year, but the resiliency of kids has been outstanding throughout. I wanted to give a thank you to Michelle B. Ennis and Sasha Truax, who have produced a yearbook in some very trying times over the past two years. I'm very happy that we're going to have one again for distribution and one that's of quality. So thank you to them. Did our awards assemblies a little bit different this year in the junior high school. I pushed in with Megan Evans into the first period classrooms and gave out the junior high awards that were given by teachers. At the high school, I did it in the lunches. The kids were played along really well and were celebrating each other's successes, which was pretty cool. And then our special junior awards and scholarships were done in a mini assembly where I actually had parents come in the building for the first time. There were only about 10 kids who were receiving those accolades, but man, it was awesome to have parents back in the building. I miss them. The school just has not been the same without our community there. So I'm hoping these are a sign of times to come. Graduation is Friday, June 25th at 6 o'clock, provided it doesn't rain here at Walter B. Howard. We're looking forward to that. And our seniors will be taking a class trip to Six Flags New England on Friday, and they'll have an outdoor movie and bonfire on campus on Saturday. Finally, we closed the year with a faculty meeting this past Monday, and I chose to lead a discussion on grading during the pandemic because we've been forced to make some unique changes based upon the situation that presented itself with COVID. I really want to set the faculty up for new standards, as Josh referenced, also to kind of shift them away from what have really been rigid grading practices. So with that, I posed three questions, which they talked about in their small groups. Number one, I asked, how successful were you at streamlining your curriculum this year? And did focusing on power standards increase learning in these areas? That's what the new standards are all about. It's really selecting power standards, the things that matter most, and digging deeper as opposed to trying to memorize and learn a ton of information over the course of a year. The second question I asked is what strategies did you incorporate this year that sought to make grading equitable? And how can these practices be incorporated in future years? I really want to see some of the things that we've done well continued in the future. And finally, how might we continue to reform our grading practices so that students can access past curriculum assignments and assessments? That's really our credit rescue program. And I think that's something that we can continue to do in the years ahead. I don't know why we wait to June to try to catch everybody up and hope that they can do it. If we truly believe in learning and we believe that it's our responsibility for every kid to learn, I don't think we should be closing grade books. I think we should be giving opportunities to improve proficiency and rescue credit when a year is in progress. And I have a number of faculty on board with that initiative. So we'll be moving towards that. Andrew, I think we'll speak a little bit more about where our credit rescue program could be going, but I look forward to it. Thank you.
On the subject C, the athletic update. Stephanie Luce reporting.
Good evening, everyone. Our spring athletic season is wrapping up. Overall, we had strong participation on all teams from New Lebanon. We hosted a sectional softball game at New Lebanon on Monday. We also hosted a track and field sectional event at Berlin with approximately 16 schools in attendance. So that was a pretty large event. It went very smoothly. We will be having a varsity athletic award ceremony on Monday, June 14th after school. This will be hosted at Berlin's auditorium. We'll honor all varsity athletes for winter, fall two, and spring seasons. There will be no spectators, but we hope to livestream or record this event for the community. We feel this will be a fun way to honor and celebrate our students as we begin to close out the 2020-21 school year. We have been planning our fall sports season. The JV and varsity fall season is scheduled to begin on Monday, August 23rd. The modified fall season is scheduled to begin August 30th. At this point, sports signups have been posted on students' phys ed Google Classroom using a Google form like we've done in the past. We are looking for interest in modified JV and varsity boys soccer, modified JV and varsity girls soccer, modified and varsity cross country, modified JV and varsity girls volleyball. Our elementary school phys ed teachers will be facilitating sixth grade students to sign up for modified sports during their phys ed classes and health classes. And then the BNL varsity soccer invitational tournament is scheduled for September 16th, 17th, and 18th. So far, we have almost a full schedule for that, still finalizing a couple of teams to attend. That's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to subject E, the business office facilities and grounds and transportation update.
Hello, everyone. I'll start off with transportation. So we have two candidates for our mechanics position, two very strong mechanics. Both have over 20 years diesel experience as well as school district experience, school bus experience. So we're looking favorable towards that and sending two candidates toward Mr. Court to decide who our new mechanic is going to be. Leonard Bus is creating a new bus replacement schedule. We're quite a bit away off of the initial one that they gave in 2018, I believe. So they'll be coming out with a new replacement plan with that. Propane Bus from the dealership is finally back and back into service. So that was sitting over in the dealership. That was warranty work from blown head gaskets on it. So again, that's another one of those propane buses that we're having difficulty with, that we'd like to get away from. As far as food service goes, we have some possibilities, some exciting possibilities to continue food service. The federal government has expanded the food program reimbursement, and now it goes into a summer program, same reimbursements, the $4 per meal that we're getting currently. We would be able to provide a breakfast and a lunch for the ESY summer school that will be taking place at the high school. And if we decide to participate in this, we could also be the food service for the summer camp next door at the town, which would be approximately 70 meals per day. And you're able to continue to do the same thing and give students and children meals, reimbursable meals for the weekends as well. So that's something that I'm exploring with Pat on that to see how it would all shake down as far as getting food service workers to be able to come in and being able to use the kitchen. It would all be district staffed people. As far as operations are going, we've got a summer work schedule set up. There's a tremendous amount of painting, exterior painting, scraping and painting. And after the Fourth of July, the architects are coming in. So this is the five-year mark where we have to do another building condition survey. So they'll be in to do that. The building condition survey is not due until the end of the year, but it's best to get it done when there's no students in the building. So they'll probably be here with engineers roughly a week. And also, the bid opening is June 22nd for Phase Two. We had a walkthrough last week. We had two general contractors in for that. We did not have anyone come in for the plumbing piece for repiping the boiler, but we do know that we already have a bid in basically from stance on that. So work should be, we should get the bid opening and hopefully we'll get a couple of good bids, and that should begin anytime in the summer, once those companies will be able to gear up. And finally, financially, we're closing out the school year. Pressers group of auditors will be coming in in two weeks to do their initial field work. Then they'll be in the third week of July to do the full audit. That's basically right now all we have on that. So in July, I'll be able to give you more on what the audits are going to look like.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to subject E, superintendent update.
Thank you. So I have quite a bit to review today, so I apologize ahead of time. But I want to first publicly thank our community for their support of our of our school budget for next school year. As we know, this has been a difficult budget year, you know, for the entire school community. But what I loved about this process is that how all of our stakeholders came together. And it really showed how our community values the education of our students here in New Lebanon. I also want to thank the board for all your support in this and all your hard work to make sure we created a budget and we were able to pass it. So it's a huge accomplishment for the district, and we all should be very proud of our community. So thank you all. I also want to congratulate Mike Bruch and also Bill Buckenroth that they were elected for another term starting July 1st. So congratulations to both of you, and we look forward to working with you. I also want to thank Stephanie Luce for her hard work this year. You know, we're going to miss you greatly. I wish circumstances were different. We truly valued all that you did for our community. Thank you for getting our athletics back in place under this difficult year. So we wish you the best of luck and thank you for everything. We appreciate it. You'll be missed. So as you all know, we had several conversations about the budget and about what was going to be in next year's budget, what was not going to be in next year's budget. So what I wanted to... So what I want to do is I want to give you all a list of all of the different extracurricular activities that we have planned for next school year. I know there was confusion with modify versus JV versus varsity, what clubs would be running next year. So this is a full list for you as the board and for our community about what we can expect for next year. So as you can see in our budget, we had $25,000 available for clubs. So what the principals did is they took a look at what the offerings were in the past. They looked at the interests. They looked at the advisor interest. This is what that we came up with. So you'll see for elementary, next year, we're offering a total of six clubs and activities. And then there's several for the junior, senior high school, including all the different classes advisors as well. So you'll see, we have a really good, we were able to maintain a really good collection of clubs for next year. The goal is, is to continue to add more to this list as we go through the years. On the next page, you'll see the curriculum coordinators. We were able to maintain this. This is a very important part of what we do. Each of these teacher leaders lead the different curriculum. I meet with them often in curriculum advisory groups, and they really help support our teachers. One thing I wanted to mention, starting this year or starting next year, what I'm asking for the board to create is an inclusivity and equity coordinator. This will be a district-wide position. This would help maintain our work on inclusivity and equity, and they would manage that subgroup that we have going. So this is a recommendation that I'm giving to the board today to create this position. It's really needed, and I think it will also show how we value an inclusive and equitable environment for our students. Athletics, there was absolutely no reductions to athletics. We are going ahead with a modified and a JV and a varsity level athletics. So there's no reductions there at all. And then for field trip allotments, there were some reductions to field trips. So you'll see the amount of money that we have planned. This is about half of what we've had in there before. So for elementary school, $5,000, Nature's Classroom, $6,500, and junior, senior high school. So the principals are currently working through those numbers and dividing them equally by degree levels. So these will be split up so everyone gets an opportunity. Now, I just wanted to ask the board of something today. So my question for you is thoughts on families contributing to field trip costs. In the past, when we had a field trip, families didn't contribute at all. The district paid for everything. Now, we can still support that $25,000 does not include transportation. So for example, if a teacher was a couple dollars short to go to a zoo and they needed to collect $5 per student, I want to just, you don't have to give me an answer now, we can talk about this later, but I want to be thinking about, are we willing to ask our families to help fund some of these trips? And I know this already happens in the high school, especially for the senior trip, and they have to fundraise and parents have to contribute, but that's never happened in the elementary school before. Nature's Classroom, $6,500 is not enough for what we typically do at Nature's Classroom. So Mr. Noble is working with his team to see what the options are, to see could we only go to Nature's Classroom two days instead of four days? What would the cost be? Because there was a reduction to that as well. That budget's typically about $13,000, so it's about half of what we usually do. So there would be a cost if we continue to go to Nature's Classroom for our families, if we continue to do it the same way, or to look, what are the other options instead of maybe Nature's Classroom? So, you know, think about that as a board. Do we want to ask our families to contribute? Or do we want to just stay with these numbers and just try to plan of what will, you know, fit those numbers? But that will be something that will be coming up next year. Any thoughts or questions on that extracurricular? So now I just want to review some mask guidance changes. This was a very difficult weekend for our superintendents around New York State. There was a lot of confusion over masks. Friday, the governor sent out a letter asking the CDC, I shouldn't say the governor, it was actually the DOH, sent out a letter asking the CDC if we had to continue with masks in schools. We went all weekend not knowing what Monday would look like. So finally, we received guidance on Monday that the CDC is saying that masks need to still be worn inside, but they do not have to be worn outside. So then the district had the discretion to decide to do that. As a district, we have made that mandate that when students and adults are outside, they, as I have my mask on, they do not have to wear a mask. So going forward, they do not have to wear a mask. Now, I'm not sure, will that change? I don't know. It will all really depend upon what the guidance says and what happens this summer. So starting as of Tuesday, when students are outside for recess, when they're outside for lunch, when they're outside for PE class, when they're outside for athletics, the community does not need to wear a mask on grounds any longer. And that's based on DOH guidance. So we were hoping at this point we would have guidance for next year. We do not have any guidance for June or for on September. So we're still waiting on that. So I wish I had more information to share with you what next year would look like. A lot of teachers, administrators, and parents are really wondering and trying to guess, but there was no guidance on that. There was an advocacy committee last week where we advocated to the commissioner to please get that guidance to us sooner or later. And then two days later, we had this mask change, you know, so who knows what's going to happen. One thing that I'm really trying to figure out is that virtual instruction. It's very hard to plan for next year without this instruction, without the guidance for next year. So right now, we're unsure if we have to offer virtual instruction. What I'm proposing to the board is that we only offer it if we're mandated to. What I would like to do is I would like to send a letter to each and every one of our virtual families, letting them know that we don't plan on offering the virtual option next year, just so they can start planning ahead for it. If we are told by New York State that we have to offer virtual instruction next year, I would recommend that we use a BOSI service rather than our teachers. Our teachers have really struggled doing both. It's not normal in New York State. It's not typical for teachers to be expected to do both virtual instruction and in person, but our teachers really jumped to the occasion and have done a great job with that. It's impossible to maintain forever, though. It's like asking them to teach double the work because they're having to provide instruction for both. So my recommendation, and after talking to the union and talking to the teachers, I don't think we can ask them to do that again. So what we are doing is we are budgeting for that virtual instruction option for a BOSI's in the funding that I'll talk to you about in a minute. So what I'm hoping to do is send those letters out next week, then telling people to come to me if you have any questions or comments, and we'll see what we get back. But I would like to go ahead and plan for full in-person for all students next year. Any thoughts on that from the board? We'll see how it goes. Correct. It'll be homeschooling if we don't, if it's not. Now, last year, it was mandated by the governor. So we all had to offer that. Because originally, if you remember, Ms. Wickham was really advocating hard not to offer that as an option, but then we were all told we had to. And we had to put something together very quickly last summer. But now, no one else offered it, so we had no other choice. But BOSI's is stated to us that they will be offering some sort of program if it's, if we're looking for it. So what that cost is, how many kids we're talking, I don't know yet. But that's kind of what we're planning.
How is BOSI's going to do that? They're going to have teachers for each grade level?
So, great question. So they would be using different softwares, I guess, is what they're saying. And they would hire teachers to manage it. So they might have, you know, when you're doing, when you're doing large group of people and have a combination of many people for many districts, you could have a kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, second grade teacher, all the way through. They're also saying they would be able to provide something for our high school student. There won't be a lot of elective choices, so there won't be, it would just be what's mandated. So it's going to look very different. We're also hoping that if we, you know, if it's not our staff, maybe people would be more, less reluctant or more, they would rather not do something like that since it's not our community, because, you know, people love our community, love our staff. We're hoping it will tice them. Now, if there's a medical need and the doctors know, that's something we might have to look into, but we would offer them that person. And like always, there's always a home instruction option for families, the homeschooling option. Correct. So that is exactly what BOSI's is saying, that if they do it, it would have to be a commitment for the year. Correct. Now, that doesn't mean if, say, we have a huge influx of COVID, say if we have to close and go virtual, you know, that's a whole different conversation. You know, we would still do that. We would still go virtual. Teachers would teach it. But this is that option, you know, as things are as they are. You know, we would still support, of course. We don't know what next year's going to look like, but we would still have a plan to transition quickly to remote instruction. But our teachers then would be doing it for all of the students, not just some in, some out. So that is the plan.
Any idea, Andrew, any idea when you might get the heads up that you need to offer it?
From the state?
Yeah.
Even in the, you know, we asked that question to the commissioner. She was unable to give us any indication. Not even approximate. So we just advocated for sooner than later, you know, as soon as possible. The sooner we can get it, the better we can plan for it. So I'll talk to you actually right now about the federal funding. So federal funding. I know this is very complicated and complex. How could we be adding positions when we just had to make reductions to the budget? Trust me, I'm asking myself that every single day, how is this happening? But it is. And it is because of the stimulus money coming from the federal government. So the federal government has given not just our district, but all districts across the country, money that's very specific for student learning loss and COVID expenses. So our district is receiving $275,473 for the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, or called CRRA. Our district's also receiving $618,672 under the American Rescue Plan ARP. The first one, the CRRA, has to be used within two years. The American Rescue Plan has to be used within three years. So what we've decided to do as a district is split those as far as we can get them. So we're going to split the first one into two years, the second one into three years. Now, very specifically, we must use this money. We cannot use this money, what we currently have in the budget, has to be in addition to. And it has to be very specifically put in for COVID relief or instructional loss. How will they know this? Because we have to fill out a grant. We don't just get this money. We have to fill out an application. We have to fill out a grant process. This grant process is actually due on Monday. So we have to rush this, and that's why we're talking about this now. So by Monday, we have to, we have to apply for the grant. The application has to be in. Francis and I are working on that this week. And then by July 1st, we have to have a plan on our website. So it's a very quick process. We have to use it. If we don't use it, we lose it. And we have to use it for very specific things. So on the first two pages is a letter, because transparency is everything. This is very confusing. I sent this out to our community today, to our teachers, to our parents. And this letter's explaining what I just told you and how the district plans on using these funds. On the second page, you'll see the breakout. So what we did, since the application is due Monday, what we've done is we have to really plan this out. I've collaborated with stakeholders, the administrators, and we look to see what our needs are for learning loss and what our needs are for COVID. And this is what we came up with. So one thing that we can use it for is mental health support. We have a psychologist salary under this money. Learning loss is huge. It's a big piece of it. Correct. So it's replacing the salary, and I know, I think you asked this question one of the board. So what it is, it's taking, this one actually is Jenna Cup's salary, and we are taking it out of the regular budget. Now, all of these costs in here are not including benefits. So rather than putting the benefit cost in here, it's very complicated when you're using grant money. We're taking that money that we had planned for the psychologist position, and we're using that to pay for the insurance of all these positions. So this, these numbers in here are without benefits. So it's going to even itself right out. But they're very specific of what we can use the funding for, and mental health is one of those things we can use the funding for. So the next two things on here are what better ways, what better ways to support students and adding RTI teachers? That's response to intervention. So these teachers will work with kids in small groups and to be able to support them. Right now, at the junior, senior high school, we don't have an RTI teacher. So we are hoping to hire an English teacher that can support kids in reading and writing, response to intervention. So when we assess a student and they're struggling, they're below grade level, So, when we assess a student and they're, and they're struggling, they're below grade level, we can provide them support with that extra teacher. And we, right now, we have two RTI teachers at the elementary school. Josh will tell you, they are overbooked, and there's many kids not getting services because there's not enough of them. So, that is a huge, huge need at the elementary school to add a half. To be honest with you, I think we can add two more of those teachers at the elementary school and still not be able to support all the kids and need the extra support. The next part in this plan, like Matt was talking about, hiring two teachers for high school credit rescue, also intervention. So, there's a kid at the high school that is struggling, not passing their courses. They would be assigned to this after-school opportunity, and they would work with teachers to get their grades up and to intervene and to give them the support. There's many times we're always saying, I wish we had more time with the kid. I wish the school day was longer. This is providing after-school support for students. So, you'll see that, that there's two teachers at the elementary school for $3,500 stipend each. We're working out the specifics of that. And we'll be sharing what the exact plan will be with you later. IREDCOST, that's the Intervention Progress Monitoring Program that Josh did a presentation on earlier. So, we're going to be using the funds to pay for that. We're also using the funds for summer school. Part of the grant, you actually have to provide a summer school. So, we'll be taking, using that to support our students. And Josh is currently working through that right now. Then, there's the piece about elementary permanent substitute. You know, we were hoping more would, but we're having a hard time getting people to join. So, right now, how many numbers do you, how many do you have? About 30 students right now, just elementary school. Yep. We're, we're trying to, you know, our thought was, let's start with the three teachers that you already approved. If we get more, we'll add more. So, we haven't, not, we haven't had as many people sign up for it as we were hoping. What's that? Are you talking for high school or for, are you talking for summer school or the intervention? So, you know, no one is, we recommend it, we can't force it. It's different at the high school. Want to talk about how high school works with summer school, John, or Matt?
It's all based upon credits. You need a certified teacher for every discipline. In science, it'd be more specific. So, for our little schools that have high school, summer school program, it's virtually impossible unless we were to embrace a totally online option. Probably the online option, the kids weren't successful, weren't successful when our own teachers were providing the online option. I don't know that it would be the best idea to try to promote that and spend the money to do that.
So, the next thing on the list is a building substitute. Right now, we have zero, I could really say pretty much zero substitutes. So, when our teachers are out, it is pretty much, let's divide and conquer. Right now, we're pulling our teacher assistants to sub on a, on a regular basis. Now, every time we pull a teacher and assist, a teacher assistant to sub, they get time and a half. So, a substitute that we would usually pay $100 for, we're paying anywhere between, depending on how much that teacher, that TA makes, $150 to $200 a day. So, the district is actually losing money by, by putting our TAs in those substitute positions. With this money, there's PD opportunities. We're going to, if in order to do PD, teachers need release time. So, we put, we're putting in this proposal to add a substitute, a building substitute, which means every, this person would come in every single day. They would be there every day, and they would be assigned to somewhere needed in the, in the classroom, rather than pulling, or in the school, rather than pulling a TA. So, in the long run, this will actually save the district money because we won't have to be utilizing as many TAs. You know, it depends on the day. But I don't recall ever a day that we didn't need a substitute, to be honest. There's a, right? So, this person will always have a substitute position, and if there was a need, the principals will have a bunch of different tasks that this person, you know, can do. So, that's the proposal there. It would be $100 a day, and we would allow for benefits for one person, not for a family, not for two persons, for one person. And that would not be, that would not be, that position would not be in the bargaining unit.
Why would it not be? Why would the bargaining unit not want that to be?
Great question, but they, if we did, we'd have to offer them the same benefits as the other employees. So, they did not. Yeah. So, they agreed not to put them.
It's a, it's a substitute, but I see that going down a slippery road because if I was in the teachers' union, I'd say, well, you got another teacher here, full-time, teaching class all day long, same as we are, but you're not, you're paying them $100 a day as opposed to what, you know?
They're not planning, and they agreed to not being put in the bargaining unit. So, I think we're good. Could the teachers' union have a discussion with me on that? Most definitely, but they didn't. So, the next, the next section, Learning Loss, Professional Development, and Materials. So, professional development is exactly that. Giving professional development to our teachers to provide extra support for that learning loss piece. So, having speakers in, have, sending them out to different workshops next year. And this is when we'll need more substitute coverage to do that. Another one that I'm putting in here is the Equity and Inclusivity Coordinator. This is a huge, this is actually now, equity and inclusivity committees are now a mandate from New York State. So, I'm hoping that we can get this approved through the grant as well. Correct. Yep. Yep, it's the same thing, $1,000 stipend, just like, it will be, it will be treated just like any other curriculum coordinator position, but they would be focusing on the equity and inclusivity. New York State has mandated that every school district has an equity and inclusivity curriculum and also a committee. So, this person would help. I would oversee the committee, but they would be the coordinator. We have some money in there for cleaning supplies. And then, the last section for the next two years, we have money set aside for virtual learning students. So, that's what we talked about. If it's mandated that we have to give that option, we would have funds there to provide that service. Now, if we're not mandated, we would have to reallocate those funds and talk about how we would use that money. But I wanted to set it aside just in case we're mandated to provide virtual learning. Yes, yes, most definitely. That's what I'm hoping, if we had to use it, that's what we would use it out of. You know, but I just wanted to plan ahead for it, just in case we have to do it. All right, any questions on this?
Yeah. At the last meeting, we had $100,000 that was supposed to be coming from last summer's thing that we still hadn't seen. We filled out two grants for that and had not seen any of that yet. So, where do we go from the $100,000 to a $275 and a $618? These are different?
Totally different.
Totally different. Where'd the $100,000 go?
That's the CARES Act. So, we received 20% of that money. And we put in the FS10As to receive the final 80%. So, we should see the final 80%, probably sometime this summer.
What's the timeframe on these other two?
They work the same way. So, these are federal grants. So, you get 20% upfront. You have to spend the money, prove that you spent the money, and then, they reimburse you the rest of the money.
So, would we have this money before the end of the fiscal year, then?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. And so, the first CARES Act.
What will that do to our, what will that do to our cash flow during the school year, though, if you get 80% of that in, like, June? Because you will already pay these salaries and most of the rest of this money.
Correct. So, the money, the money will be spent.
So, in June, when we're get, say, we get the 80, 80% of that in June, we're going to be in the hole by June. In theory, we should have no money until taxes start coming in, right?
That's where the fund balance is going to kick in, correct. That's why it's important to carry your 4% because the 4% is what's going to carry you through.
Even the smart schools money, same thing. So, we were given money from the SCAR, we don't just, we don't get it until we spend it. So, i, i, it's, that's how it is for all the federal, including the Title I, Title II grants. It's how it is for all the federal money.
Yeah, so, so I'll put, so once we get to 50% of the year, I'm going to put in for 50% of the month, up to, well, yeah. We're going to get 20% right upfront, but... Because it's, because it's salary, it's a lot easier to do. If you got into supplies and things like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we took benefits out of there, too, because it makes it much more challenging. I was going to say something else. All right. So, that is the federal money. So, the next thing I want to talk about is the athletic director position, just to make sure there's no confusion on that. This is another. So, I did send this in the board update to everyone, but I just wanted to explain this a little bit more. So, as you know, over the budget difficulties, the district reduced the athletic director and the assistant principal. So, we had to create another way to, to, to continue to have an athletic director in our district. So, if you remember, what we did is originally, we talked about reducing a .6 PE teacher. And what, what was decided is that we would reinstate the .6 PE teacher, and we would give them partial athletic director responsibilities. So, what I've done is I've met with stakeholders, met with the union, met with our, our different staff. And we have a teacher that I will be assigning this position to. So, this position's broken up into really four different pieces. So, there's a .2 PE teacher, which is one section of a class. Then, there is a .4, and we're calling it athletic coordinator rather than director. And you'll see, that's the first section. These are all the responsibilities that that person will be doing during that .4 day. And that's approximately two hours per day that they'll have to do all this work. There's a lot of different pieces to this position, a lot of different responsibilities, a lot of different communication with stakeholders, a lot of meetings. There's a lot of different work to that. So, the next one, the next piece is the after-hour expectations. So, being that the administrator was reduced from the budget, now, we're working with bargaining unit people. If we assign someone after-hour activities, as a district legally, we have to pay them for that. So, what we decided, we kind of calculated the amount of expectations after-hours, and together with the union, we came up with that $5,000 stipend per year. So, this person will have $5,000 to do all those different activities. As you heard, the season starts in August. So, that means summertime. Again, if we have summer responsibilities, we have to pay the person for that summertime. So, what we're proposing is five days at the person's hourly rate to start planning for that fall season. You'll see organizing equipment, coordinating schedules, communicating with coaches and families, and then, the athletic placement process facilitation. So, that has to all be done over the summer. And currently, our current position also has several summer days, and that's when they do that work in the district. So, today, what we're asking is for the board to amend that position, that the .6 PE position, and turn it into a .4 athletic director and a .2 PE teacher. Any questions on that? Correct. Yep. We just had that discussion. There were some stipends that were awarded mid-year throughout the paycheck. Every single stipend going forward will be at the end of the year because we have to make sure they're doing their role before we give it to them. Because the Berlin Athletic Director will, will be responsible for that. Yep. All right. One last thing. So, I wanted to publicly just have a discussion about the new Lebanon tax approval procedures. So, one thing we've been working on as a district office is putting procedures together. I know when we were talking in our, in our board update, there was a question about the tax approval procedure. So, I wanted to share the procedures with the board. This is how we, going forward, how we're going to monitor and how we're going to ensure that the tax approval and the tax process is done correctly. So, I'm just going to review this really quickly. The tax collector will send the estimate tax to be raised to NAREC. Then, the final rates from the Office of Real Property Tax will be sent to the business official. The business official will send these rates to the tax collector. The collect, the tax collector will send these to NAREC. NAREC will then put these in the proof summary. So, the proof summary, that's the review of the taxes to make sure that it's done correctly. Starting towards the end of July, five weeks before collections, the tax collector will gather the assessed values from each town assessor. The tax collector will send the assessed values to NAREC. NAREC will then put these values into the proof summary. Now, the proof summary is our check and balance system to make sure it's done correctly. The tax collector will complete and sign off on the first sign-off. So, there's three different sign-offs in this process. They'll be checking off the school valuable, the school taxable value, the total applied STAR, and the STAR savings are correct. Then, for our second check, the tax collector will give this to the business official, who will also sign off on those things. So, there's a double process here. Then, number nine, the tax collector will send the signed first proof to NAREC. NAREC will look it over, then they're going to do the second process. So, number 10, you'll see these are all the things that NAREC will send the proof to the tax collector. The tax collector will be the first to check the following areas. So, they have to make sure all of those areas are done correctly. After they check off on those, they're going to give it to the business official, who's also going to check that all those things are correct. Then, number 12, after approval, NAREC will provide an electronic file of taxpayer bills. The tax collector actually gets a copy of all the bills electronically for all of our citizens. The tax collector, to check this, will print out one tax bill from each municipality and review that. And then, they're going to sign off on that. And those are all the areas they have to sign off on using the bill, when they're checking off the bill. Tax collector then will send the bills over to the business official. The business official will check those items again. Then, then the business official will create the tax warrant, and you'll approve it at August meeting. Then, NAREC will print out, and mail the tax bills to all the New Lebanon taxpayers. Yep. I, I just saw that on here because I fixed it for everyone else, yep. Yep. So, we'll have a district office binder, and we'll put a copy of all that in a binder. How does that sound? Yep, definitely. Just going to write it right now. I'm going to put, so we'll put all three proofs. Good, good point. Yep, I'll add that to it. I'll take Francis off of that and put business official.
And Lisa's mentioned by name in line 14.
Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts on that?
I've, it says that it starts in July. What's that, like, the 1st of July or the middle of July? Or because if we're going to approve it in our August board meeting, that's like the first week of August. So, all, all these are going to go back before three times in, in three, four weeks?
It's a quick process. Francis, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be kind of held hostage a little bit by the, all the different towns. So, it is the goal to get them and hound them, starting in July, to get that information. Once we have that information, the turnaround for NAREC is quick. You know, so they would, we would send the initial proof, check that off. You get that the next day. So, I mean, you literally could get that stuff done in, within one week. It's a little tight having August, you know, the first week of August. But, you know, we'll stay on top of the, the towns and the county, make sure that we get the information from them.
Altogether, it's about a five-week process, so they say. So, it should be five weeks before it is approved, is what they, is what, you know, they, the goal is. But I know last year, it wasn't, the process wasn't completed in time. So, I think the meeting was, there was a special meeting for it. But our goal is not to have to do that again. Any other questions on this process? All right. So, the last thing I have is I just want to propose that we open our board meetings back up to the public, starting in July. And what we would do is we would do it in here. We would have spots for people to come in, and that way, we won't have to show. in, and that way, we won't have to stream it any longer, unless the board wants to continue to stream it to, but we don't have to if we allow the public to come back in person. We all good with that? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item three, approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve item, action item A is written. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600. On to item four, curriculum and instruction. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600. On to item five, financial. Subject A, third quarter internal claims audit report. Anybody have any questions, concerns? All good. Okay, want to do the next?
I'll make a motion to accept on financial items five, B through H, as written.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600. On to number six, personnel.
I have a question first, before I make the motion. So I was looking at, subject F, for the amendment, and I just wondered about the certified pool operator, when it actually, because it's typically in the CFA contract, and perhaps this happened in the year that I wasn't on the board, but seeing that it's a teacher that actually is being approved for that position, I didn't know how that played out, because it was formerly CFA. I think it's actually called out in, in, in the contract, unless it's been changed. Like I said, it could have been in that year that I wasn't here.
It's the amendment for Tim, because we want the, um.
That's great.
She is writing in, it's CFA, nobody caught it.
Yeah, so, so the person that was originally appointed for it, he, he resigned from the position, so, so then Tim was put into that position. So that is. Sure, and he, and he was, so he was the only one that was certified and able to go into that position, being that was the last year in the position. Sure, yeah, no, that's a great point.
Yeah, I believe that when that happened, it was basically by default, because we had nobody else to do it.
I know that's always been a hard position.
He agreed to do it, so.
It is, yes, it's always been a challenging, but that, yeah, that was why he was the only one available to do that.
Yeah, he had, he had the training previous, because he runs the pool there anyway, so.
And what Francis and I have talked about is trying to get, because it is so hard, because you need to have the training, you need to have the certification, you need to pass the test, we want to try to get multiple people to try to take that, so we have some more options once it gets down to it, in case someone resigns like that. But we will, I will make sure, I, to be honest, I did not know that requirement, so I will make sure that when we're, when we're training people, that we stick with that. Sure. Yeah. Sure. Yep, no, thank you.
All right, so on that note, I'll make a motion to step back, S and I, A through M.
I'll second.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600. To item seven, superintendent. Subject A, final goals update.
I'm not going to review this whole document, but I'm going to give you each one. So I, I color-coded it to try to make it a little easier for you all to, to see. So you'll notice, we have our, our main goals, we have the academic goal, deliver instructional and assessment practices based on a strong curriculum that prepares our students to be global citizens. Second goal is wellness and socially-emotional, support our students socially-emotional and physical well-being. We have our fiscal goal, provide the best possible education while being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. And lastly, our community goal, which is strengthen community, family, and school partnerships through effective communication and opportunities. So as you know, we have many stakeholders here in our district, so what we did throughout this year, you'll see in red, this was the update from the middle of the year, back in January, then we had our June update, our final update, that gave a summary of how each of our stakeholders did that. So you'll see in this, in this, we have the superintendent and BOE, how, how we've met that goal in our department. Then we took the high school, and Matt wrote how he has met those goals and what has happened in his school. Then we have the elementary, different pieces that Josh worked on throughout the year, he documented in here. And then we have the business official, and Francis also did an update on his goals. And then lastly, Jennifer did an update on her goals, based on the different areas. You'll notice that Francis and Jennifer did not have a goal in each area, it just was more dependent on what they did. So this gives you a really good summary of what was accomplished, what we're still working on. Now, there's some items in here that are going to certainly continue for next year. Now, one thing I want not, just the board to think about, is, you know, do we want to just continue on with these goals? We spent a lot of time creating them this year in the fall. I think these are great goals, they've been very helpful to us as an administrative team, to really keep us focused, to keep our communities focused. So one thing, I would like to establish these goals over the summer, rather than waiting till the beginning of the year, so we can base these goals on what we do as an administrative team. And when we have our retreat, I want to really take these goals and really focus on them. So what I'm proposing is in July, we have a goal conversation, and that, at that restructure meeting, and decide whether or not we want to continue on with these goals, or make any additions to them, or changes to them. So think about that, and we'll talk about that in July. Any questions on the update? If you have any questions, as you have a chance to look over it, I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions in July, and then, like I said, we'll work towards planning goals for next year. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, on to item eight, board open discussion. Subject A, next part of that meeting, July 14th. Anybody have anything else?
I had, I had one question. We had, we're, we're required to have a second language teacher for second language students, for English as a second language, and for a while, we, we have, the Spanish teacher was going to take all the necessary things, and then left, and it's been an on-again, off-again. Are, do we have somebody now, or are we getting there, or?
So, great question. So Matt and I have been having a lot of conversations about that. There is a teacher that has taken some classes, and they're interested in continuing that and getting certified. So that was something I was actually going to talk to the board about at executive session, about supporting that teacher to get that certification. Right now, we're, the teacher's in the researching phase, looking at different programs, looking at colleges to figure out what the cost would be, and how many credits exactly she'll need. But yes, that's what we're hoping to do.
Anything else? Moving on, do we need an executive session? Yes, okay. Do I make a motion to enter into executive session for discuss, purpose of discussion, personnel?
Personnel, yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600.
I second it.
I'll make a motion to appoint, answer court, court program.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries 600. Thank you.